I think it's time we got started. We're right at five o'clock. Welcome, everybody. It's great to see a big crowd. Sometimes you have a big crowd. It's a good thing. Sometimes it's not such a good thing. But tonight, I think it's a good thing, so welcome, everybody. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on August 13th, 2024, and ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Gass?
Present.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Present. I'd ask Commissioner Smith to please say the invocation, and we'll remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for your grace and goodness. May your face continually shine upon us so that your ways may be known in our communities.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll kick off with some new employee introductions in Parks and Recreation. It looks like Taylor is going to handle it for us tonight. Welcome, Taylor.
Thank you. I have the honor tonight to introduce two employees. First one is Emlyn Herndon, right here. Emlyn's been with us since February 2022. A little bio on her, she grew up in the heart of Texas and transferred to University of Kentucky in college where she graduated with a degree in equine science and management and animal sciences. So that's how she got to the general area. Emlyn started February 2022 as a senior recreation specialist and has recently been promoted to recreation supervisor. She's done a great job in the past running the farmers markets. She's led CPR first aid classes and certification classes for a lot of our department staff, as well as running different events such as Touch a Truck and Flag Day Celebration. So she's been with us for a little while, but recently promoted, and glad to have the opportunity to introduce her to you all again.
Great. Thanks. Thank you.
And our other employee right here is Elizabeth Kimball. She actually started working for us back in January. A little bio on her, she grew up in Callaway County, moved to Lexington in 1999 where she got married, obtained a degree in event management and marketing, and had three daughters. In 2015, her family moved back to Callaway when her husband Daniel began working for the Paducah Police Department. She then graduated from Murray State with a degree in public relations and joined us in January. When not working, she enjoys spending time with her family, outdoor activities, photography, and new adventures. So far, she's been helping us run the farmers market. She's also been in charge of different programs such as Movies in the Park, Arbor Day Celebration, Little Park Fish Out, and also has been helping with the Robert Cherry Civic Center. So this is Elizabeth, and fortunate to introduce her to all of you as well.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. And I just want to make one quick comment. I mean, Parks, the Parks Department, Parks Recreation, Parks Department is one of the areas that interface with our citizens, I mean, every day. You know, our parks are so important. So the job that you guys do is very critical in the way we present ourselves to the folks in the community. So thank you for all your work, and congratulations. Okay, we have a proclamation tonight. And so we have a proclamation. We have a proclamation just about every commission meeting, it seems like. But for those coffee lovers out there, we've got a good one tonight. This is Paducah Coffee Appreciation Day, and I would ask Levi McDuffie to come up, and I'll read this and then give it to you. Okay, we're going to honor this proclamation. We'll honor our baristas in the community. So it reads as follows: Whereas baristas are the unsung heroes of our daily routine, providing expertly crafted beverages that fuel our days and lift our spirits; and whereas baristas exemplify excellence in customer service, creativity, and commitment to fostering a welcoming environment; and whereas baristas play a vital role in our community, offering comfort and familiarity to regular patrons and travelers visiting Paducah; and whereas with strong communication skills, approachability, and local knowledge, baristas often share local events, places of interest, and recommendations for shops, restaurants, and other businesses; and whereas we recognize the invaluable role baristas play in our daily lives and the positive impact they have on our community; and now therefore I, George Bray, Mayor of the City of Paducah, hereby proclaim August 19th, 2024, as Paducah Coffee Shop and Barista Appreciation Day. So let's get a picture.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got one.
Got one? Okay. We're done then.
Thank you, sir.
And just to make sure that we didn't, you know, that everybody got recognized, there was proclamations that have gone out to all the coffee shops. So thanks again, Levi, for the suggestion. Great idea. So next on the agenda, we have a presentation from John Perkins, our Director of Finance, on a new open finance budget portal. And I'll turn it over to you, John. Is Emma going to be up here with you or standing by yourself?
She's my backup in case I fall out here. As soon as I get the mouse.
Is she close? Okay, I just want to make sure. Don't let him fail, Emma.
Okay. Well, here we go. Good evening, all. I didn't realize we're going to have so many people come and join us for this interesting presentation, but appreciate you that you've come. The City of Paducah is really trying to enhance its reputation with transparency. And this is one way our staff, finance, and IT have worked for a long while now to try to get this up and running. It's public, out on our website, and I'll just run through with you here and let you see how it works. So you can go to the city's website, which is www.padukaky.gov, and you can either select finance and find the open record, not the open record, but the open finance software. Either you just have to look at this. It's easy to do. You can do it right now if you have your computer with you. Or you can go to this screen, and this is all the online services that the city has. It's alphabetic, so just look under the O. And so I guess we'll just start out, we're going to do a flyover of the first page of the transparency. And what this does, there's so many different things it can do. It will show you the budget for clear back to 2021, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25. And we'll spend most of our time, and I'll try to keep as brief as I can, to 24 because it has activity, and at 25, it just hasn't had much time to percolate yet. And this is just a summary, just giving you some examples of, this is the 25 budget. And if you can see it from where you're at, this is the revenue budget. Revenue is what comes in. The page before this was expenditure budget, stuff going out. Again, you can look at it as a pie. There's line graphs. There's all kinds of different ways you can look at this. And then you can drill down inside of it. And it's relatively simple, and just hit the carrot there, and you can go back and forth wherever you need to go. And also, to enhance it a little bit more, on that same front page, we have built in where you can go to the city's website. That's the far-left icon. The one next to that is the budget. And again, the budgets, probably have 10 different years of budgets there. And then to the right of that is the annual financial report, the audit. You can look at something like 20 different audits if you want to do that. And then on the right there is the, our most recent addition, is award-winning, national award-winning, popular annual financial report called the PAFR. We hope people will take time to look at this. There's lots and lots of material. Now, let's take a minute here just to kind of explore, see what we can see here. Again, this is the homepage. If you drop down, you can either go to the revenues, or you can go to expenditures. So we'll drop down first and go to revenue side of the stuff. And then you'll see on this page here, all the different budgets, all the different funds, and each fund has a budget. And then if you want to, if you want to see, you can either look at it from the budget perspective, or actually what happened. And we tend to always want to look at things, what really happened. And as you can see, the gray bar, that's the budget. The darker color, that's what's actually happened so far. Again, this is the 25 budget, so there's not been much activity yet. This page shows you, again, you can look at all the different revenues by all the different funds. But we're going to drill down into the general fund because that's the most popular one that people know about. So we're going to click on that normally. Again, this is a static presentation. This is not live. We were afraid that something could happen, and we didn't want that to happen. So we just want to show you how you can do things. So if you were to drill down into the general fund, you can see all kinds of different revenue categories. The most popular one is the very first one, the biggest one, that's called occupational license. That's payroll, business license, insurance, premium tax. And if you want to drill down further, you can do that. And again, I have selected the 24 budget year, so there's some activity. And remember, in this, you can't, this is 30,000-foot view of things. We haven't had 24 audited yet, so numbers could change, but not by much. And if you would look to the right, you can see several choices that you can do, different types of graphics. You can do a snapshot like this, do a pie chart, which you saw earlier, or you can do over time, which I'll show you here in a minute. And then at the bottom of each page, you should also see a table. So if you don't like the pictures, you can look at the tables. And the tables will give you the actual numbers. It'll give you ratios of where we've been, where we should have been, and things of that nature. Now, I want to drill down into the occupational license a little bit. So we'll do that. And if you were on the screen and you took your mouse and hovered over any one of these bars, it will bring that black box up, and it'll tell you what the budget was, what has been collected, in this case, to that point in time. This is only updated once every seven days, so again, this is static, but we updated it sometime late on Sunday nights, so once a week it does change. Now, as you can see in this example, in the payroll account, we expected to receive 19 million. But as of the print of this, it was 19.6, so we did okay. Now I want to drill down a little bit further and go into specifically payroll tax. And let me dip in a little bit more. You can look at this over time, and you can see 21 through 24 and actual, and 25. But you can imagine, the number on the far right, that's 25. Nothing's happened yet. So the trajectory, you can see that it's on the upside, which is great. Again, you can click either budget, or you can click actual. You can make it a pie. You can make it a bar. You can make it a line, whatever you like. Okay. Again, this is a 30,000-foot view of all the revenues for 24. And then I'm going to move back into the expense side. So you've got to go back to the homepage and click it like this. You'll see the word explorer at the bottom. Anytime you see that, you can put your mouse on top of that, click it, and in this case, you'll see the 24 budget. Again, in the black box, you'll see what we expected to spend and what we did spend. And just for bragging purposes, in the general fund, we did budget 47.4 million, but we only spent 46.8 million. So we were under budget. Okay. Now, you can click into any fund, and in this particular fund is the general fund, and there's subcategories. And you can see they are public safety, in this case, general government, public services, and others. And if you want to drill further, we'll do that here. We'll pick on public safety, because that's easy to do. And again, you see at the bottom, if you don't like the bars, you don't like the pies, you can see the tables. Now I want to drill in a little bit further into public safety. Public safety in our city is made up of police and fire. And then if you want, again, you do a table, however you want to do that. And we're going to drill into PD, Police Department. And Police Department is broken down into four divisions. And if you want to drill further into that, in this particular case, I want to drill into Patrol. That's the biggest division. And then you can see within the Patrol Division, you can see the largest category, of course, is going to be people. It can be wages at the top. The next one's probably going to be employee benefits, and then so on and so forth from there. Then you can drill down even further if you want to. In this case, I selected employee benefits. And in this case, you can see the very top line is the pension, followed by health insurance. Again, the gray is the budget. The dark color is actual. And again, you can see a table at the bottom if you want to. And that's a high flyover of this thing. Now, I'm going to give you a picture here real quick of the 24 budget expenditures. That's just another picture, another view of it. And if time permits, are you, a few more? I can give you some more examples, or I can quit.
Go ahead with examples, please.
Okay, let's go. So we're going to look at the general fund expenditure budget for 25. I have more examples, not too many. You go back to the homepage again. You drill down into that. I've done some shortcutting here, but you can see in 25 what our budget was. You look at the very top, and you see our budget was 121 million. This is the one you just passed a few months ago. Seems like a few months ago. It's been a while. And again, you can drill down into anything. I selected the general fund. Again, you can see the categories of that, drill down further. And this time, I picked general government. I wanted you to get a feel for that. And I'm probably not going to pick the one you're thinking. So you can see all the categories that are considered general government, administration, IT, finance, planning, and others. So which one would you like to look at? I heard finance, so we'll look at that. And this is a graphic view of it. The top line, that's the entire general government. And that yellow line, the flat one, that's the finance department, again, over time. And you can do this on any combination. And it's hard to see, I know. In that gray box on the right side of the screen, there's several different categories. You can pick any one of those. You can not pick any of them, and see how one department compares against the other or the total. So it's really easy to compare. So anybody have any questions?
So just a quick comment. I mean, well, first question is, you weren't, this wasn't live, but it will be live for anybody that wants to use it.
It's live right now.
It's live right?
This is not, but it is on the website. It is live.
But you didn't want to use it live tonight?
Yeah.
We were, because of technology potentials for lag, and because we stream live, if we were doing it live, there was a chance of it to not sync up, and so we did it static instead.
Exactly. Or if the lights went out, you never know.
Okay.
We had a backup plan. It's called paper.
Okay. And I think the point to people, you know, really is if they're curious about where the city's revenues come from, where they're spent, they can get to this data, and it's updated weekly.
Right. If you're watching from home, you can actually go in there right now and follow, do exactly what I just did. And it's just really, it's pretty simple. It actually is. If you have any questions, then they can call us, and we can help them walk them through it. It's a pretty neat program.
Okay.
Really nice. Thank you.
Absolutely.
And then part of that, the reason you were called commission, that during the priority setting, you know, we talked about having the opportunity with finance and technology, helping us, as John mentioned at the beginning, to show that data in a different way. Instead of somebody just trying to go and look at our budget and try to go through page by page and try to figure it out, this is another way to make it easier to find that data and be more transparent.
Exactly.
Yeah, I think an important point you said, but if somebody really is trying to get to some data and they're having trouble, they can call in and somebody will give them some support.
Yeah, absolutely can.
Okay.
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, John.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, we'll move to the, to the rest of the agenda. City manager, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
Okay, we have one person who has a public comment. So Gordon, would you like to come up? You're, you've got three minutes.
My name is Gordon Bremencamp. Most of the year, except for the fall. I live at 325 Minerva Place. I was born and raised in Dearborn, Michigan, the home of Ford Motor Company. And we were blessed by having an enhanced tax base as a result of all the many factories and buildings that Ford had in Dearborn. And one of the results of that was that we had four high schools, each of which had a swimming pool. We had nine junior highs, and every one of them had swimming pools. And we even had one elementary building that had a swimming pool that was named Henry Ford Elementary School. In addition, we had a camp of 1,000 acres with five lakes and a beautiful beach, at which I worked for several years during college. And that was available to our citizens. And then if that wasn't enough, they had a series of outdoor pools that almost anywhere in the city, you could walk to an outdoor pool during the summertime. My point is, is that when I first came here, I was really concerned about the fact that there was a lack of swimming pools. I was aware only of the one at Broadway Methodist Church and at the PAC. In fact, I had some involvement, although I'm speaking for myself here. I had some involvement with the Broadway Pool. In 2015, I became aware of the fact that my favorite pastor, Dr. Joel Bray, was, BL, I should say, was having to spend an inordinate amount of time running the pool. And that was, I thought, something that shouldn't have been part of his duties as a minister. One Sunday after church, I approached him in the Narthex, and I said, Joe, I've been certified by the Red Cross since 1960 as an instructor for water safety and lifeguarding and first aid, and I'd like to run your pool for you. I don't want any remuneration. I simply want to give it the leadership that it needs. And I did that for two years. And at the end of that time, we had a surplus budget of over $10,000. I think it's a tragedy that that pool is today sitting there empty and not used. The only place people can go if they want to swim would be to the PAC. When I was at Broadway, at Brooks Pool, we had adults coming in in the morning for aquatics, water aquatics. We had swimming lessons. We trained lifeguards. On the weekends, we had pool parties. And people would come in, and they'd look around, and they'd say, oh, I remember this. This is where I learned to swim. And today, we don't have any of that. And so what I'm suggesting is, is that maybe you could have a committee of people from representing the city and another committee representing the church, and maybe you could come together and somehow have an agreement to work together to resurrect Brooks Pool. Thank you.
Thank you, Gordon. And I think you reached out to have a one-on-one with me at some point. I don't know if this is what it's about, but I'm happy to chat with you further about that. Thank you for being here. Okay, next, we have Mike Muscarrella with Baptist Health, who is going to present a quick presentation on a project that, I guess, called Heart Strong Kentucky, that has been run on the South Side. So I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city commissioners, for allowing me to give you a brief presentation of a grant we received through the Centers for Disease Control. It's called Heart Strong Kentucky, and it's focusing on the South Side and a heart initiative in that neighborhood. And we'll go to the next slide. Perfect. What is Heart Strong? It's a five-year CDC grant that is aimed at identifying and addressing cardiovascular disease disparities and improving hypertension and high cholesterol outcomes. UK Healthcare Kentucky Regional Extension Center and 20 state partners were awarded the grant. So there are 20 census tracts in Kentucky, 18 in West Louisville, and one in Hopkinsville, and Census Track 302, which is right from Washington Street Baptist Church south to the Belt Line. So it encompasses Coleman Park, Elamunal Neighborhood, and Blackburn Neighborhood. And we are focusing on working within those neighborhoods to address cardiovascular disease and the risk factors. When you look at Kentucky ranking 10th in the nation for the highest number of eligible census tract, when we look at crude prevalence rates of 53%, we find that that census tract, over 53% of the people have risk factors for cardiovascular disease. Now, the Heart Strong Partners are Baptist Health, Mercy Health, and LeAnn Balliger is here representing them. Kentucky Care, that's Chelsea Blackwell. We have the City of Paducah, Palmer Stroop. The Regional Prevention Center, which is Cynthia Turner. We have the Housing Authority of Paducah, and that's Joseph Anderson is here. We have Ninth Street Church of Christ, which is Pastor Mark Rowe. And then the Purchase District Health Department, which is Kent Coster and the team. We'll go onto the next slide. Perfect. So what are we going to do to address these two issues? High blood pressure and high cholesterol. So we hired two interns through Kentucky Care. And they were working with us on the initiative, which LeAnn Balliger and I work as the leads for the grant within our committee. And so we are working with community coalitions. We're establishing strong communication within the neighborhood, collaborating within health fairs, and doing educational workshops to promote cardiovascular health. And we're also worked on providing and developing a directory of community resources and clinical services, not only for cardiovascular disease, but the entire health issues with United Way of Paducah. Next. Good. This is Census Track 302, as we talked about. It's Washington Street at the very top, and it follows the river. And you can see how it meanders down toward the Belt Line. This is the area that we're looking at and focusing on. There are about 1,970 people that live in that census tract. Next slide. And I want to thank the city clerk for helping me with this. We did obtain two interns for the summer. Ethan Morgan and Jackson Miller. Both of them are pre-med students at the University of Kentucky. They are in the Lewis Honors College. And they both were prepped on the activities that we need to do during the summer. They're both from Marshall County, graduated from Marshall County High School. Ethan is a biology major, and Jackson is a psychology major, and also Jackson is an Eagle Scout. And they are working from May through December, and in the summer months, they work 30 hours a week while they're back at school. It'll just be 10 hours a week. I wanted to go over the priority projects that we mapped out, and LeAnn and I worked on saying, we really need to know the addresses in the census tract. Palmer Stroop gave us a directory, an Excel spreadsheet of all of the addresses. And then they went through and walked every street of Census Track 302 to see what type of, what was on that property. Was it a residence? Was it a business? Was it a vacant lot, or was it something like a pond? Also, we focused on using that database to do health mailings because we know people in our community want health information, and they want screenings. And then we focused on community events and activities, such as the Alpha Care Event that we hold every June in celebration of Juneteenth. And we had that at Mount Mariah Baptist Church this past June. They also worked on focusing on the community health needs assessments that both the Health Department, the Baptist Health Paducah Health Department, the City, Baptist Health Paducah, and Mercy Health have to do periodically. And then we worked with Palmer Stroop and the city and had them participate in the Greenway Trail Expansion Feedback Project, because we're looking at the Greenway Trail going through Census Track 302, which is going to be very, very exciting for that neighborhood. And then the big thing was that we obtained 250 blood pressure devices that we're able to give away during events for the residents of Census Track 302. And that was a huge project that they helped develop. Next slide, please. This is all of the activity that they've done. I'll highlight a few things. They ended up working, they had a bike ride with Tanisha Bell. And this commission does know Tanisha. She's well-known in 302. She grew up there. She took them on a bike ride through 302 to show them what it was, what it is, and what it could be. And it really helped our interns learn about the community that they're, they're working with that this summer. They also worked with the Delta Sigma Theta Group and had, at the Rotary Health Park, and did free blood pressure screenings. The big thing is they distributed 97 blood pressure devices this summer in the health fair events that they had at the Housing Authority property, at the W.C. Young Center, and at Saint, or at Ninth Street Church of Christ. So we're excited about that. Plus, they have worked with the, the Police Department, with the community meetings, working with Recovery Walk, doing the Jackson House Outreach, and developing relationship. Thank you. Joseph Anderson is here from the Housing Authority to help us, you know, learn where we needed to go and move forward with the activities. Next slide, please. This is a picture of the flyer that they developed, and they use for the four screening events that were just held about three weeks ago. And Kentucky Care let them use their mobile clinic. And you can see here, they are employees of Kentucky Care as interns, but they were able to use the mobile clinic and take all 97 people that were screened through there and instructed them on how to use the device. Last slide, please. And this is a photograph of the interns, Ethan and Jackson, at some of the blood pressure screening events, and at the, at the health event that we had at Mount Mariah Baptist Church with, is that Alpha Cares? That was Alpha Cares, yes. So I just wanted to show you and let you know that Healthy Paducah, a health coalition, which started with the health park. We worked in partnership with the city with that $400,000 grant that we got from the Foundation for a Healthy Kentucky. Now we're receiving a $130,000 grant from the CDC to improve health, specifically cardiovascular health, in the South Side of Paducah. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks very much, Mike. And Mike talked a lot about our two interns, Jackson and Ethan. It was great having you guys here this summer. I guess, Jackson, you've already had your medical school interview, and Ethan, you've got yours coming up this week. So we, we just want to wish you the best of luck going forward. But one of the things we get to do here is recognize people doing good things for the community. And so we've been giving an award here since back in the 1950s called the Paducah Award. And so we have prepared for both of you guys this evening, Dukes of Paducah Award. And so if you guys will come up here, I'll, I'll present them to you.
I want to just say, you guys have been everywhere this summer, so thank you. It's been great to see you walk in, and you always greet everyone with a smile.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's get a picture. Somebody get a picture. Say, doctor.
And we want you to come back when you finish medical school and practice here, right? Mercy Health, Baptist Health, we want them to come back.
Okay, before we get into the consent agenda, I just want to mention one other thing. There was a group of us that went down to our recycling facility in Nashville on Friday of last week. You know, the City of Paducah is in the process of, over the next year, we're going to be reducing the cost of curbside recycling to, to nothing. It's going to be free of charge in July of next year for anybody in the City of Paducah. But one of the things that always comes up about recycling is where does the product go? What do they do with it? You know, does, do we, do we really recycle it? I mean, people have trouble really believing. So we went down, we learned a lot. You're going to be hearing a lot more about, about what we learned about. But we actually went on-site. We actually saw one of our loads that had been unloaded. You know, one of the things they talk about in recycling is contamination. And so, excuse me, a, a load could be contaminated, well, many things contaminated, the wrong things in there, liquids, anything of that sort, you know? And the City of Nashville actually is this particular facility's number-one customer. And Paducah is far, far ahead of Nashville in terms of what our contamination levels are. So they're, they're very low. Can we improve? Sure, over time, we can improve. And I think there's an educational component to this that we will be taking on with all of our, with all of our citizens in order to encourage recycling, but to encourage the right kind of recycling. So more to come on that, but we had, we had a great visit. It was myself and Chris Yarber, Pam Spencer, and a couple of people, Dr. C., and his assistant Shelby from the University of Kentucky Local Engineering Campus here. So there was five of us. We spent better part of the morning there, once we got there, and learned a lot, and we'll be getting a lot more information out. But I think the main, the main point here, I guess, is that our recycling facility down there is, is doing a great job. We saw exactly how our, our stuff gets recycled. You know, they do not accept, they do not accept glass at this facility as of yet, but they hope to in the future. And I, if there's one takeaway from the whole day, I would say that please do not put plastic bags in recycling. So recycling, plastic bags are, are really a problem for recyclers. So more to come on that. With that, I'll move to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. The city clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless any commissioner would like one removed. And if not, I'll ask the city clerk to please read and call roll.
Approve minutes for the July 23, 2024 Board of Commissioners meeting. Receiving filed documents. Appointment of Gregory Cannon to the Brooks Stadium Commission to replace Howard Finley, who resigned. This term shall expire December 5, 2024. Personnel actions. A municipal order declaring the real property located at 621 and 623 McKinley Street, Paducah, Kentucky to be surplus property, accepting the bid of Bradley Moxey in the total amount of $2, and authorizing the mayor to execute the deeds and all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing and directing the city manager to initiate a request for proposals for renovation of the Coleman Park Spur Gown. A municipal order authorizing and directing the city manager to initiate a request for proposals for repairs to the transient boat dock. A municipal order approving an employment agreement between the City of Paducah and Police Officer Matthew Wentworth, and authorizing the mayor to execute same. A municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a lease agreement between American Towers LLC and the City of Paducah for lease of the American Towers Tower located at 6765 Contest Road. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for services with the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council in an amount of $200, $250,000 for specific services. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with the Paducah Area Transit System in the amount of $215,000 for public transportation services. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Barclay Regional Airport in the amount of $120,000 for general aviation and air carrier services. A municipal order approving a termination of a $365,000 subdivision performance and warranty surety bond with Walker Properties of Western Kentucky LLC for Trails End subdivision, and authorizing the mayor to execute said termination and all documents related to same. A municipal order approving the acceptance of a $365,000 subdivision performance and warranty surety bond with Trails End Development LLC for Trails End subdivision, and authorizing the mayor to execute said acceptance and all documents related to same. A municipal order accepting the bid of Linwood Motors for sale to the City of Paducah. Seven patrol SUVs in an amount of $56,510 each, and two K-9 SUVs in the amount of $61,835 each, for a total amount of $519,240 for use by the Paducah Police Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. A municipal order authorizing a master intergovernmental cooperative purchasing agreement with Omnia Partners, and authorizing the purchase of rollout containers, lids, and additional replacement parts off of the Omnia Partners Cooperative Purchasing Contract with Toder Inc. in an amount not to exceed $300,000 for the Public Works Solid Waste Division.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Commissioner Ges?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Municipal orders. We have one municipal order. Did I miss? I'm sorry, we have two municipal orders. I would have figured that out, so. I'll have the city clerk to please read the first one.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order Approving the Purchase of Christmas Decor From Holiday Outdoor Decor Through Buy Board National Purchasing Cooperative" in the amount of $48,554, and authorizing the mayor to execute any documents related to same.
So moved. Second.
Chris, tell us, tell us about this, this decor, this Nuga decor we're going to have for this year.
Good evening, all. Thank you for having me. We've been trying, working to replace the holiday decoration lights on Jefferson Street for a little while now. We finally have it in place. Last commission meeting, if you recall, you approved an agreement with a purchase group called Buy Board. This lets us buy the Christmas, excuse me, holiday decorations from these, from this group. In addition to changing the holiday decorations on Jefferson, we will be adding holiday decorations to Walter-Ton, which I think will be a nice addition to that area on the South Side and to what we're trying to do improvement on the South Side.
Great. I think that's, I think that's a, a great improvement and fits into our South Side initiative, you know, quite a bit. So that's great. Any discussion from anyone?
Just to give you an idea, based on the number of boulevards on Jefferson and, and what's going up as far as the polls on Walter-Ton, there will be 51 decorations on Jefferson and 21 on Walter-Ton. So we think it'll be, it'll be really nice. It's just a matter of the number of boulevards and the size of it.
Where you have electricity too, right?
Excuse me?
And where you have electricity too.
We will have electricity. They will be lighted, yes. There's the work going on now that Paducah Power is doing for it.
It'll be exciting. Can't wait to see it happen.
Yes, yes. Good deal.
Great. Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Please call roll.
Commissioner Ges?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye. Okay, the second municipal order is a project that we've been working on for a long time and very excited to have this on the agenda for tonight. And I'll let Hope Reasons come up and tell us about it.
Good evening. It is wonderful to be up here tonight and be able to share this fantastic news that we have in partnership with the Uppertown Heritage Foundation for the Hotel Metropolitan and the Purple Room. As the mayor mentioned, this has been an ongoing process for several months and had several steps involved throughout this application process. But we did recently receive notice that we have received this grant for 1.34 million. And what that will allow the Uppertown Heritage Foundation to do, it includes capital improvements to both the Hotel Metropolitan as well as the Purple Room. It allows for some landscaping design and things for the outside of the building, some really cool plans there that are in the works. It's also a capacity building grant, so it provides funding for them to hire some additional staff to come in. There's going to be training for the board of directors, just a multitude of things that are going to benefit the organization and the buildings. And over the next three years, we're going to just see some really transformational and exciting things coming for them. And Betty Dobson is here tonight, along with some of her board members. There has been discussion before about the city and the Uppertown Heritage Foundation entering into a co-stewardship agreement for the implementation of this grant and the funding that was awarded by the city to the, to the organization. And so we're in the middle of that right now. And it's going to, you know, outline the roles and responsibilities of each organization as this is a grant partnership, and really looking forward to it, and some, just, just amazing fun things to come.
Yeah.
When, when will all the excitement begin?
That will begin in August.
And is there a picking order? Is there, is there any priority lists, what you'll begin with first?
Yes. So the first year of the grant will focus on renovations to the Hotel Metropolitan. It will focus on hiring an executive director as well as a curator. And then we'll also start some of the board development as well during the first year. So it's going to be busy.
It's going to be good.
Yes.
That was exciting.
Yeah, so we're in the process of developing that co-stewardship agreement with the Uppertown Heritage Foundation. And so that will set out everything that's going to take place. So that work is already, already going on and, but getting an executive director on, on board and starting the renovations. You know, there's a big, big tourist opportunity here, you know, to build upon the successes that we already have experienced, but, but to have even more tourism come in Paducah. So it's, it's very exciting. It was a very competitive grant, and we were very fortunate to, to win out. And Ms. Betty did a great job in New York, in New York swing. Swing the, the committee of New Yorkers.
Yes.
You know, that, that we needed, needed that money here in Paducah, Kentucky, so.
She is very persuasive indeed.
Also, I believe Brent Legs, Paducah native, Brent Legs played a role in this as well in encouraging it. And, and I really believe our study, the city study that we did on preserving some historic sites here, had a lot of that outlined in it in his report. I feel like we owe him a big thank you as well in helping to guide us down this. Yeah, definitely.
Well, we can take care of that, yeah.
We'll see him in September. We can make that happen.
That's kind of easy. But, but yeah, Brent, you know, we started off, I mean, I guess we heard him at a Chamber, a Chamber event three years ago. That's when we got introduced to him.
DC.
And, yeah, DC first, then he, then he presented at a Chamber event. Then we contracted with him to do a study. And so here we are today, three, three and a half years later, with all this success, so.
Yeah, paid off. So great, great job. It's so exciting.
Absolutely.
Thank you, all. We appreciate it.
Thank you for all you've done.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Betty.
Yeah, because Betty's been a great leader over there, so thank you.
Yeah. Keep up, keep up the good work. Yeah, keep up, keep up the good work, more good, more good times to come, so.
Thank you, that's good, thank you.
Okay, please, please, any other questions, comments? Call roll.
Read the motion first.
Oh, read the motion first, then call roll.
Let the Board of Commissioners adopt a municipal order entitled "A Municipal Order Authorizing the Mayor to Execute All Documents Necessary to Receive Grant Funds Through the Mellon Foundation Humanities in Place Grant Program" in the amount of $1,340,000 for capital improvements to the Hotel Metropolitan and Purple Room and to build the capacity of their board and organization.
So moved.
Second.
Now you can call roll.
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Bless you all.
Thank you.
Now the hard work begins.
Yeah, I think so.
That's exactly right. Thank you all for being here tonight, okay. Okay, we have one ordinance to introduce tonight on medical cannabis, a long time coming, and I'll ask our city clerk, please read the ordinance.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled "An Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky Amending Section 126 of the Planning and/or Zoning Ordinance Relating to Medical Cannabis." This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance regulates land use applicable to medical cannabis businesses in the city of Paducah, including zones in which licensed businesses may operate as dispensaries, cultivators, producers, and safety compliance facilities. This ordinance places reasonable limitations on medical cannabis businesses in geographic location as well as in advertisement.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Josh, educate us about the process and where we are in it.
Good evening, Mayor Bray, Commissioner, City Manager, Madam City Clerk. So this has been a long time in the making. As you all may remember, this body passed a resolution in May supporting medical cannabis within city limits of Paducah. So since that time, we've been working with other cities, finding out what they've been doing, doing our research, looking at the state regs, and we've crafted something that we believe is tailored to the city of Paducah. This did go before the Paducah Planning Commission on August the 5th, and it's coming before this body with a favorable recommendation on a unanimous vote. So a new section of KRS, which is 218B, takes effect on January 1st of next year. So by the end of this month, some dispensaries and other medical cannabis land uses can apply to the state, which specifically is the Cabinet for Health and Family Services to open up medical cannabis facilities, and I'll go through what those are here in just a few minutes. And there are five types, which is a dispensary, a cultivator, a safety compliance facilities, producers, and processors. And the first one that I'd like to mention is a dispensary because it has the most information attached to it to bring before this body, and it is the actual retail component of medical cannabis, where if somebody has a card from their doctor, they will go to the facility and they will use it to make that transaction to get medical cannabis. We are proposing for these to be in the B3 zone and higher density zones, and the reason for that is these facilities have the potential to generate traffic, where the B3 zones and more dense zones are typically located on our major arterials, thoroughfares, so people can get in and out quickly from that facility instead of being next door to a neighborhood, kids getting off the school bus, people getting home from work, it's not having that local interaction, it's what you would normally think in terms of retail restaurant bank, that sort of thing, and that type of environment. There will be a lottery coming up in January to where dispensaries will be placed within 11 different regions across the state of Kentucky. Our particular region has 10 counties in it, which is all the purchase area plus Crettonden and Livingston. There will be no more than four dispensaries per the whole region, and no county can have more than one, so I would expect McCracken County to have one since we're the largest city, but Mayfield, Murray, Hickman, Marion, we, we don't know where the other one would go, and it's all speculation at this point. The only other caveats that we have with dispensaries is they can't be located next to a house or an apartment building or a structure with a residential component, and also they have to be located at least a mile from any other dispensary. So with McCracken County only having one, as of right now, that won't be a problem. And the state of Kentucky requires them to be 1,000 feet from a school and daycare, which we rode into our ordinance as well. Safety compliance facilities are akin to laboratories, and a licensed chemist or biologist has to run that facility, and they have to be completely separate from a dispensary or a cultivator or a grower, they have to be their own independent functioning lab. And these are proposed to be located in the industrial zones, the planned office park, and the hospital medical zone, because those zones already permit labs as part of medical facilities or other types of testing. And the other land uses, specifically cultivators, processors, and producers, are all types of land uses that involve an industrial type of connotation associated with it, such as the growing, the processing, the manufacturing, the packaging. We're proposing for those to be located in just industrial zones because that's the principal permitted use is located there now. They can go in and do it. So we have provided definitions within the zoning ordinance as to what those specific things are, that way whenever a medical cannabis land use looks at us, they can tell exactly what they fall under and where they can be located, so we've made it pretty clear on hey, you're this, and you can go here. So with that, I would be glad to answer any questions you all have, and I know that you've had some education in the past, so this is a great step forward, we feel.
Any more questions?
Question?
Yeah.
So in January, the state will make the determination of the four dispensaries that could be in this region?
Yeah.
And then, like, if we are selected for one, then how is it selected? Who gets that? It's a lottery drawing, is that right?
Yes.
And the state will do that as well? The state would pick from them? Then how long do they have before they're supposed to be open?
That I don't know, I've never found an answer to that question, so I, I'm not sure, but from what I can tell from the volume of calls and emails we're getting, they would like to open as soon as possible.
Yeah, so nothing would happen though before January?
Correct, yeah.
Any, the state has set up guidelines that before August the 15th, so just within a couple days, that any, any entity, business entity that is interested in participating, they have to make an application to the state by then. All of those that they will then identify what region or what location that they would be, the state would then certify that that region or location has passed or has not opted out to or is not waiting for a ballot measure, to then put them, as we understand it, then we'll put them into a blind drawing of those eligible cities and/or counties, and then it would be a blind drawing conducted by the Kentucky, actually Kentucky Lottery Corporation is the entity that the state will be using to do that drawing, and so our understanding of it is it's truly blind, and so, you know, if, as Josh mentioned, there's, the dispensaries on the first out, there's, there's not gonna be, there's gonna be more, more communities, more counties that potentially have going to allow this, that there are gonna be dispensaries available, so say that we're in it, I haven't seen what the fiscal court has decided to do yet, but say that they also stay in it, both our names would go in there, and then if, if our community was drawn out before theirs, then there's no way that they could get one in this initial, the fiscal, fiscal court would not be awarded, or McCracken County in its unincorporated area would not, and vice versa, if all four of them are drawn out before our county even gets drawn out, then we're not eligible in that first round, so it would be very limited, and it is a blind draw under our understanding. So we, we pass this in anticipation, but just want to make sure that the commission understands that in this first, this first iteration, there is no guarantee that our city or our county will be drawn out of that lottery to allow for a dispenser.
Okay, I thought, I understood that wrong, I thought you said they would, the locations would be assigned by the state, the drawing would be of...
There's, no, there's not, there's not enough, so as, as of the 10 counties that are in our region, there's only gonna be four dispensaries total in this first round, so that means that not every, there's gonna be six.
I get that, I just thought they were gonna assign where they were to spread it out, so they could, for being the four river counties?
Our, as our understanding is a blind drawing, is what we've been told, is that it would go in on the eligibility, so.
Okay.
But it, it's only of those that have made themselves, their communities eligible in time, and now January 1 is the date that they can start operation, but I haven't seen the exact date, I don't know if Michelle had that as well, I know she attended recently of when that drawing is actually gonna occur, but my, my understanding from it is they're gonna do the drawing sometime this fall, so those communities, those entities could begin preparing to be ready January the 1.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna say, I think you had at the, you're at the conference you were attending last week, they said a lot of them were going to have it on the ballot in November?
That's what I was getting ready to ask, Darren, we talked today, I know Ballard is on the ballot, but I don't know about the other eight counties, I mean, do you know if they're?
I've not heard, but yes, that, that's my understanding, as, as Commissioner heard at the Governor's Local Issues Conference last week, and it's also been, Michelle attended a PAD meeting a while back, and they talked about that, think about one-third of the counties that are talking about it are deciding, so the minority are deciding to go ballot measure.
But the drawing is before then, and they haven't had the ballot vote, then they're out?
They would not in the first initial, now this isn't gonna be, from our understanding from the state, this is, this iteration is just the first iteration, and they did that to slow walking, so there wasn't a high proliferation initially out of the gate of dispensaries locating everywhere, but the intention is to the state to award more of those as they go forward.
But the incorporated, like Kevl said they were gonna opt in, even if Ballard opts out, Kevl will be in.
Right.
So McCracken County could opt out, but we've already opted in.
Yeah, so we would be considered McCracken.
Yes, and so even though Ballard might lose on the, if that's a lose, whatever, but they could on the ballot, but Kevl is opting in, so Kevl could be, yes, yes.
Yep.
And, and on the times, from what I heard was, I think all the medical, all the cannabis is grown in Kentucky, and there's a minimum three to four months there from start to finish, so they obviously can't start till January 1 and to get a product on, so it's in that range, so there's, you know, second week of January, nobody's gonna be selling anything, even if they know where they're gonna sell it.
So Josh, you mentioned the amount of interest, and you care to comment on the amount of emails and...
Sure.
...calls that you've gotten?
I'm gonna estimate, we've probably got somewhere between 20 and 30 different entities interested. Lindsay did a great job of keeping a spreadsheet of who she had contact with, and before she left her maternity leave, she gave that to me, so I've been feeling...
So you're now the keeper of the spreadsheet?
I'm the keeper of the spreadsheet, but it's daily, I get a phone call or email from at least one person, so.
And Josh, I'm sorry, I was gonna say, and to that point, I believe I'm correct, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the majority of those inquiries have been about dispensaries and not the other eligible entities.
That is correct.
Has there anybody that's inquired about growing?
No, not to my knowledge, it's all been on the dispensary, yeah.
Okay.
And my eyes were opened on the dispensary, I mean, they can sell no food, no drinks, it's, it's, you know, I was just thinking, it's like GNO Pharmacy or whatever, you know, I mean, you walk in, and no, it's, it's not gonna be that at all.
Right, and it's, and there's restriction on signage of what they can advertise, and, you know, it's gonna be flash signed, and then, you know, there's a lot of those in the ordinance that is laid out as what the state allows or doesn't allow for that.
Right.
And my understanding also is that, you know, it's not just, okay, if a dispensary was opened in Paducah, that it's just wide open, you walk in, you can spend all your time and everything in there, that it is actually a, by a setup to, designed by having a, a timeframe to come in and pick up, just like you would pick up at the drugstore type thing, is my understanding from, from some of the subs.
There's been a lot of signs that have popped up around the city this, in the last couple of days about physicians, for reference from a doctor, yeah.
Yeah, and they will have to have that, yeah.
They've been picked up, a lot of them are in the ride away.
They're pretty particular about the physicians who actually, from what I got with the summit that we did, they're pretty particular about the physicians that actually, it's, they're trying to avoid that whole...
Yeah, scams.
You know, online kind of thing that you pay $25 and get a prescription, there's, there are certain regulations for physicians to actually provide the prescription to.
I thought there were, that's good.
So Josh, could we have a dispensary in Paducah, and a cultivator, and a grower? Can we have all of those here potentially?
It's my understanding, yes, whenever those licenses start being issued by the state.
But not initially.
Yeah.
You couldn't have all three of those initially.
Yeah, well, I mean, it depends on when they, yeah, I mean, the, the likelihood is not there, but, but...
But that is potential?
There is a potential, yes, on the, it's understanding of the lottery, if a community got a dispensary, doesn't mean that they would be excluded if somebody had applied for a grower's license or whatever like that.
The only one that's not regulated is the testing, you can have unlimited testing, testers, whatever, all over the...
Yep.
And there will be a blind lottery for all of those, just like for the dispensaries?
That's, that's my understanding from, from what, you know, we sat in, you know, Claude and I sat in a session earlier this summer, and then Lindsay and Michelle sat in and went at the PAD, but that's, that's our understanding, and it is all being, again as Josh mentioned, regulated at the Cabinet for Health and Human Services level.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
So that's the only ordinance that we had to introduce tonight, and now we will have an executive session, but before that, we've got a discussion about our Build Grant project, and I'll let Darren tee that up for us.
So Mayor, Commissioner, and general public, you know, you're aware that for, for several years, we've been working on to a point of our riverfront development, we got federal funds, last commission meeting, you accepted some state funds that, that were going on to help realize that riverfront development, which we, is known more commonly as the Build Grant, we did go out to RFP for that earlier this year, we had one general contractor that replied to that, it was a valid bid, and right now what we're doing is we're working through the process with our federal partners and the state to make sure that we follow the next steps, and so we're evaluating the bid, we'll be bringing a recommendation, you know, at some point in the future about the next steps about how we process that, but we're excited to get to this point, and it's still a little more work to do before, you know, we know where we, where we're heading on that, but, you know, we are working with our federal partners to make sure that we, we do that by their regulations that don't, that does not jeopardize that 10-plus million dollars that we got, and following the state regs, it doesn't jeopardize the, the 3 million that we got from the state.
And so like, like all projects, this one came in more than what we expected, and, you know, that's a common theme that you hear from every city, every government entity that are doing these major projects, and so we're, we're carefully working through that to make sure that we maximize our opportunity to come in at, at the very best price that we can before we finalize anything.
Yeah, I mean, a final would take a recommendation or a vote by this body before we finalize anything going forward.
Any questions? Just a quick overview. Okay, with that, we are going to, comments, any comments?
I, I don't, I believe, Commissioner.
Yeah, just had a comment, just talking about the holiday decorations, particularly adding them on to Walter's Time, but one thing, I guess if you live on Walter's Time, there is work that's going on that is electrifying Walter's Time with lighting and...
there is work that's going on that is electrifying Walter's Time with lighting, and kudos to Paducah Power, they've been really good on that, and I know you're on the board, and thank you. So that'll, that'll, that'll be good for the, for a lot of things, not just for the holiday decoration, so.
Definitely increases safety.
It'll really look good, and it'll be good, again, like the mayor said, it's showing that our commitment to develop the South Side, so. That was my comment.
Great.
So kudos.
Anybody else comment? You good? City Manager, you're good?
I am.
Okay, so I would, I'll ask our city clerk, please read the motion to, to move into executive session.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topics: Issues which might lead to the appointment, dismissal, or disciplining of an employee as permitted by KRS 61.810 subsection 1 subsection F, and a specific proposal by a business entity where public discussion of the subject matter would jeopardize the location, retention, expansion, or upgrading of a business entity as permitted by KRS 61.810 subsection 1 subsection G.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll?
Commissioner Gess?
Aye.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
And we do not expect to take any action tonight.